Thank you. Okay, this is the Ways and Means Committee. We are here today for City Council Resolution 21-0062R, American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearings. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I am joined today by Councilwoman Dani McCray, Second District Member of the Committee, Council President Nick Mosby, Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District Member of the Committee, Councilman Robert Stokes, Twelfth District Member of the Committee, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, Fifth District Member of the Committee, Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, Sixth District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Felicia Porter. On behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott, we have Natasha Niehue and Nina Themless. On behalf of Council President Nick Mosby, we have Matt Stegman and Nikki Thompson. Staff to the Committee is Marguerite Curran. Before we get started, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Mosby for brief introductory remarks, as he is the chief sponsor of this resolution. And then I want to get over to City Administrator Chris Shorter to introduce our folks from the administration. And then we'll kind of take a step back and give some more background and then get started. So with that, Council President, floor is yours, sir.
I'm sorry, Chair. Man, I'm trying to work something out on the other line. I'll jump back on in like two or three minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. President. In terms of, before we jump to the City Administrator, we have, this has been referred to Law, Finance, City Administrator and Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. So we'll go to the City Administrator first. Then we will get quick feedback from Law and Finance and then go to Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs to get into the details. So with that, Mr. City Administrator, the floor is yours.
Great. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Well, Chairman Costello and honorable members of the Ways and Means Committee. For the record, my name is Chris Shorter. I am the City Administrator for the City of Baltimore. I'm here today to provide testimony on the City Council Resolution 21-0062R, American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearing, which was referred to my office for comment, as you said, Chairman. The timely and efficient dispersment and management of the 641 million in federal funding that is being provided through the American Rescue Plan is a top priority for the Scott Administration.
Okay.
And I am happy to join our Chief Recovery Officer, Shamaya Kearney, to discuss how we are administering these funds. I'm sure everyone here understands that these funds are a critical lifeline that will help stabilize our local economy, put Baltimoreans back to work, provide critical investments in our infrastructure, all with a focus on equity and improving the lives of residents who have been historically underserved in those most impacted by COVID-19. 641 million is a significant insurgent of funds into our city, which has been impacted by decades of underinvestment. However, these funds have very specific requirements and they cannot be used to meet all of our needs. As you know, these are one-time funds that must be obligated and expended by the end of the calendar year 2024, which is in, as you know, fiscal year 2025. Because these funds will not last forever, are limited and have specific uses, we are laser focused on employing a thoughtful and deliberate process that ensures full compliance with the federal guidelines and is fully responsive to the needs of our residents and the businesses and organizations that serve them. To lead this effort, the mayor has created the Office of Recovery Programs that is led by Chief Recovery Officer Shamaya Kearney. Shamaya will discuss more specific updates on the application, review, dispersment and reporting processes. But I would like to take a moment to thank her and her staff for the tremendous job they have done to date. It has been no small task to stand up this office and develop both internal and external submissions and review processes with the accompanying training activities. My office and this administration share in the council's perspective that the residents should have a clear and transparent view into what these projects are being, what projects, I should say, are being funded, who is receiving the funds and how the projects are performing. We believe that quarterly briefings and reports is an appropriate timeframe to regularly engage with council. The Recovery Office has committed to a quarterly briefing cadence already and we would like to adhere to that timeline for briefings and reporting. As you know, the U.S. Treasury Department also requires quarterly and annual reporting on the performance of state and local fiscal recovery funds. We would like and ask that any quarterly or annual reporting requirements by City Council are in line with those existing compliance and reporting requirements. I would like to thank each of you for the time this morning. I look forward also to continuing discussion today, but also as we go forward. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Administrator as well. Like was laid out from Administrator Shorter, you know, $641 million is a lot of money. But when you are in a city like Baltimore with real entrenched big city problems, it's not a lot if you're just, if the idea is to scatter it around. So I know the administration, along with the council, is really keen on trying to go after and develop transformative solutions to help break down some of the systemic issues that plagued our city for far too long. The idea of having these quarterly briefings is to, one, develop this partnership so the council knows and is in line with exactly the administration's goals. But then also we provide full transparency and accountability to our citizens. At the end of the day, the goal here should be for us to create investments so we can look at the best return on those investments, be it in five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, to look back at this one instant in time where we had this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go after and again eradicate and develop formative solutions to drive our city in a new direction. I look forward to partnering with the administration as well as look forward to hearing from the general public associated with the next steps forward. As outlined by the City Administrator, you know, there are some guardrails associated with regulations tied to this money. However, we also know that many of those regulations kind of speak to the needs and the hearts of our city and the disinvestment that we've talked about time and time again. The difference that we would like to look at and the kind of motivation and grounding of this bill is not just to ensure that the money's coming in and going out in accordance with the federal regulations, but to ensuring that there's a strategic plan, again, to get the biggest bang for our buck and get the biggest return of investment for those communities that have been undervalued and underserved for far too long. That is the purpose of this. So when we talk about the particular reporting that we really are interested in on the council, we're interested not only in the X's and O's associated with the money coming in and the money going out, but we're also interested in understanding what the key performance indicators are of the money, what our expectations and what our expectations are and projections are associated with the spending of this money. When we look at the goals and the objectives, what are we trying to ultimately achieve when we're spending this money? Those are the types of variables that we're really, really interested in understanding and knowing what the strategic plan is on how this money is spent. As the City Administrator has laid out, I think a quarterly briefing of back and forth makes sense. In the legislation, we also ask for a monthly update associated with those same quantitative variables to assure again that we're moving in the right direction. Look, Baltimore, this is going to work out best when the administration is working hand in hand with your legislative branch and your legislative branch is working hand in hand with the community and the residents in which we serve. It's going to be that partner in progress. It's going to be that connectivity that drives for the better outcome, level-setting expectations, but ensuring that we know what the plan is so we can look back in five years, 10 years, 15 years and get excited about what we're able to do right here in this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to a productive hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's jump over to the Law Department. Assume this is approved for form and legal sufficiency. Natasha, can you confirm that their position has not changed?
Their position has not changed, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's no objections. Let's jump over to Finance. Bob?
Hi, good morning. Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by our written report that we submitted. I just wanted to make a couple of short comments about our perspective on this, on this bill and ARP in general. So from the early stages of COVID-19, the Department of Finance and BBMR primarily have been providing guidance to the city leadership on how we can best respond to the COVID-19 pandemic from a financial perspective. As I've shared with folks many times, it's been really devastating on the city's finances and has been quite a challenge this year to keep everything running smoothly. In the early stages of the pandemic, when we thought it would be a short-term event, we chose to manage the CARES money that we received and also to apply for FEMA reimbursement, really with our existing staff, with just help from an outside vendor, Ernst &amp; Young, who we have as an on-call financial vendor that's been helping us with that work. Given the length of the pandemic and the size of the amount of money that we're getting from ARPA, you know, we felt at that point that it was right to kind of switch gears and have a separate office set up to just manage this money in particular. And of course, you'll hear from those folks today. The off, two comments on just the financial picture going into the use of ARPA funds. So first off, on the team itself, the team will be funded by the ARPA funds, which we think was the right decision. Again, given the size of the money, you know, making sure we stay compliant with all federal rules and regulations, you know, making sure we have a good process for accepting applications and, you know, making sure that the money has a good impact, like was mentioned earlier. Our office finances is, you know, a part of the team reviewing all the proposals that come in for ARPA. So we are one of a few other stakeholders that are on the team reviewing proposals, making sure that we look for things that have an impact and also that we can scale down eventually when ARPA funds go away. We're also providing guidance to the mayor and his team and to the ARPA team on how much money we should set aside for what I call budget stabilization. So again, ARPA is more flexible than the previous dollars that we got through CARES. And so we are allowed to use ARPA dollars to backfill lost revenues and we might have to do that over the next couple of years, depending on how quickly we can recover from COVID-19. So we've been providing guidance to the ARPA team. The idea is that we should be working hand in hand so that, you know, when they're making decisions on ARPA, we don't forget about the overall financial picture for the city as a whole and don't make any mistakes that would leave us in a worse position coming out of COVID-19. So with that, that's my comments. That goes what we wrote in our report and happy to stick around and answer questions as need be. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Kearney, I understand you have a presentation. Marguerite, can you please pull that up on the webex? Ms. Kearney, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Costello and the members of the Committee, City Council. I'm Shamaya Kearney. I serve as the Chief Recovery Officer for the City of Baltimore. I have a couple of remarks that I'd like to share before we get into the presentation. I want to thank you again for providing an opportunity to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act and the process for implementing these funds. Before I go into the presentation, I'd like to publicly thank Mayor Brandon Scott and CAO Chris Shorter for selecting me to lead Baltimore City through the implementation of this historic investment of $641 million in ARPA funding. I also want to take a moment of personal privilege to thank and acknowledge the team in the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs, who work long days, nights and weekends to help stand up this office and who give their best every single day because we know that Baltimoreans are depending on us. As you well know, the city receives $241 million in ARPA funding. And as the mayor has stated and also been echoed by City Council President and CAO Shorter, these funds will not completely solve all of the challenges facing the city. However, with strategic investments, these funds can help us course correct and change the trajectory of the city. The Scott Administration, as well as myself, are committed to a transparent and accountable process. That is why the Recovery Office is committed to quarterly oversight hearings and plan to post quarterly and annual reports submitted to Treasury on our website to make this information publicly accessible and available. Finally, ARPA is often cited as a historic opportunity as it pertains to financial investments and economic opportunities. But really, ARPA is a lot more than that. We, as elected officials, city agencies, our university, nonprofit and philanthropic partners, we all have an opportunity to collectively begin the process of restoring faith in local government. Although we might not always agree and have consensus and agreement on the approach or the use of funds, I choose to believe that we are all seeking the same tangible outcome, which is a better Baltimore City. So with that, I'll go into my formal presentation. Next slide, please. So the presentation is broken up into four components. We'll go over the legislative background of the Recovery Office roles and responsibilities, funding uses and framework, and then the application process overview. Next slide, please. Next slide. So for context, I thought it was important for us to understand some of the background on the American Rescue Plan Act. This is a $1.9 trillion bill that was signed in March of 2021. The U.S. Department of Treasury launched the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, which is the fund that provides the $641 billion to the city. And in addition to that, the Treasury Department is the federal agency that is responsible for monitoring states and local governments' use and implementation of ARPA funds. As was mentioned in some of the opening remarks, the law requires that all funds are awarded by December 31, 2024 and expended by the end of December 31, 2026 in the calendar year. Next slide, please. I also thought it important for context to understand the difference between the CARES Act and ARPA. So the CARES Act was really focused on immediate relief while ARPA is more focused on strategic investment over time. You'll note that the law, CARES, was signed into law in March 2020, but all funds were expected to be awarded by December 31, 2020. For ARPA, the law was signed on March 2021, but all funds are expected to be awarded again by the end of calendar year 2024. So while there are some overlap in the uses for these individual laws and how these funds can be used, there are obvious differences in the time components. Again, ARPA is intended to be more strategic. And so because of that, we have really developed a process that we think will help with the oversight and management of these funds and help us to have more strategic investments as well. We've proven as a city that the city can disperse funds fairly quickly. With the CARES Act dollars, the city awarded funds by the fall of 2020, well before the statutory deadline for the end of that calendar year. And while we're still in a place of relief and we know that relief is needed, we still are also in a place where we need to be strategic about our ARPA investments to ensure that our recovery is sustainable and impactful. Next slide, please. Also wanted to provide an overview of ARPA funding to make sure that there is some understanding about how this money has been provided to the city. So tranche one of $320 million was provided in May of 2021. We are expecting the second tranche of that money to be provided to the city in May of 2022. So that would be the entire $641 million. In terms of our estimated allocations, you heard Budget Director Sennemy talk about the budget stabilization in his remarks. There was an estimated amount of about $141 billion that would be needed for budget stabilization, $130 billion to offset COVID-19-related revenue loss and then $10.6 million, which is equivalent to 1.7% of the total $641 billion provided to the city to fund the Office of Recovery. Important to note that these are estimates, which means that they could change over time as we begin to see how the economic outlook is for the city moving forward. So again, that would leave about 78% or $500 million to fund our recovery programs. And those are the project proposals that we receive from our city agencies, our quasi-government agencies, as well as our nonprofit organizations. Next slide, please. And so here, we're going to go into the Recovery Office structure to help provide a little bit of understanding about our structure and what our role and responsibilities are. So the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs was created to oversee the use of ARPA funds and maximize impact for Baltimore residents. Our office officially stood up July 12, 2021. So we've been in existence for a little under three months. In that time, we have onboarded nine of the 10 positions that were allotted for this office. You can see on this chart, it provides the structure of our office, which includes our Deputy Director, two project managers, a data project manager, accountant, community engagement specialist and administrative assistant, budget analyst and program compliance officer. Our project managers are the individuals that will be working with our applicants and really managing the process from proposal through implementation. They will each have individual portfolios and that will be divided depending upon the project proposals that we receive. In addition to that, we have our data project manager. So you've heard discussion about performance measures that will be required to report to the United States Department of Treasury. Our data project manager will assist us in gathering that information and making sure that we have reliable information and data to provide to Treasury as well as to our internal and external stakeholders. Our accountant and budget analyst will work with our finance department to make sure that we have right account numbers, that we are monitoring our spend down. I mean, if we see, are also analyzing and determining if we may have areas of understanding once we get to the point of awarding funds. Our community engagement specialist will do just that, engage with community, help us push the word out about any decisions that we're making around ARPA funding, including making revisions to our website to make sure that that's up to date with award announcements and any other data or statistics that we think are important to share with the public and again with our internal and external stakeholders. An administrative assistant to assist us with the mini-meetings that we have throughout the days. And in addition to that, making sure that we're on top of our operations. And then lastly, our program compliance officer, who is helping us to look at project proposals and determine eligibility and also provide reporting to deputy mayors and to council. Next slide, please. So another thing that I thought it was very important for, not just the council, but also the public and anyone else who's interested in what the Recovery Office is doing, is to understand our guiding principles. As a director of this office, I am keenly aware of the spotlight that is on this office, on the concern on the use of these funds and want to make sure that people understand my leadership style and how I'm directing this team. And so with that, I am keenly focused on these five guiding principles, which again are the things that I share with my office as well. Impact, transparency, equity, accountability and responsibility. Those are the tenants for which we come to work every day and keep in mind as we make decisions around the best use of ARPA funds. Next slide. So the role of the Recovery Office. We are more than just the keeper of the checkbook. We are the office that is responsible for communication, for the application process, as well as for funding, compliance and implementation. We have the responsibility of accounting for and providing oversight of these funds that were entrusted to us by the federal government. But in addition to that, we also have the task of making sure that everything is done in an equitable, transparent and efficient manner while also keeping to the letter of the law and providing all of the reporting elements that are demanded and required of us by the Department of Treasury. Next slide. So now that we've talked a little bit about the structure of the office, I also want to go into more of an overview of our funding uses and framework. The Department of Treasury has outlined five main categories for eligible funding uses in their interim final rule. Those include public health, economic impact, premium pay, revenue loss, as well as broadband, water and sewer infrastructure. There's information on expenditure categories that are also eligible under the law and we've included a list of those valid expenditures that can be found with the link that's included in the slide deck. And all projects that we fund must respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency and its negative economic impacts. It's also important to note that if Treasury determines that any funding was used for ineligible projects, those funds must be repaid to the federal government. While some of our eligibility decisions may not be popular, the Recovery Office is focused on ensuring that all ARPA funds are used for eligible purposes and thereby avoiding any potential repayment. It's also important to note that Treasury has not yet published their final rule. Therefore, eligibility guidance is subject to change. Next slide, please. Also wanted to highlight kind of the funding categories and the way that we in the Recovery Office think about ARPA-related projects. So again, you've heard about budget stabilization. That includes revenue replacement, lost revenues from the pandemic and also the administrative expense categories, which again funds the Office of Recovery. We also talk about city stabilization and those are things that are specifically identified and called out in the ARPA law. That includes pandemic response, broadband infrastructure, workforce development, violence prevention and economic recovery. Then aside from those, any other proposals that we were received from our city agencies or nonprofit partners, we think about those in terms of a bucket or category of city recovery. So that includes, again, any proposals that we receive from our agencies and nonprofits. And we want for those proposals to adhere to not just the law, but also to the mayor's five pillars, which include prioritizing our youth, building public safety, equitable neighborhood development, clean and healthy communities, as well as responsible stewardship of city resources. Next slide. So quickly also want to go over the application process to make sure that there's an understanding of the framework that we've established for ARPA funding. So the application process is open to city agencies, quasi-government agencies, as well as nonprofit organizations. Applications should request at least $250,000 in total funding over the course of the project. Nonprofits that apply for ARPA funds should hold a 501(c)(3) status to be eligible. In addition, nonprofits need to have a good standing with the City of Baltimore and the State of Maryland and also have a physical location in the City of Baltimore and proof of an operating office in Baltimore. I think it's also important to note that as a number of cities around the country are identifying how they plan on implementing and utilizing ARPA funds, that the Scott Administration has taken both a top-down and bottom-up approach to implementing ARPA funds. By that, we mean we're probably the only city that I'm aware of, at least at this point, that are allowing nonprofits to participate in this process and to apply for funding and assist us with recovering from the pandemic. In addition to that, obviously, there are areas that, again, were called out in the law that we will fund projects for and those are the ones that agencies have discussed with the mayor and also with our office as well. So that, I don't want it to be lost that there is a component for our nonprofit partners to assist in the recovery of the city. Next slide. So this is a high-level overview of the application process. What we have first is our pre-proposal stage where potential applicants determine what their ideas are and kind of self-screen for eligibility. They might determine whether there are potential partner organizations that they want to partner with and then also submit a proposal and determine if they want to combine their efforts with other partner organizations. So the pre-proposal is really kind of the 30,000-foot level is what we call it, where it's really idea conceptualization before we move into and determining eligibility before we move into any further into the process. So then we have our proposal process. Our applicants submit proposals. So then we have our proposal process, our applicants submit proposals, uh we determine whether. Uh, agencies or nonprofit organizations, uh their ideas are eligible for ARPA funding. Uh, we have a review committee, a six-member committee that reviews and scores proposals based on scoring criteria, which I'll discuss in another slide. And then uh our review committee advances a proposal, declines a proposal, or may request revisions. Uh, there may be some proposals where it's not quite clear what exactly the intent of the proposal is, so we may go back. To agencies or nonprofits and ask for additional information and clarification. Uh, then we move on to the formal application process. Uh, that is when uh the applicants work with our application advisors in our office. Uh, to develop the full application package. There's a number of supplemental documentation. Uh, such as the implementation plan and performance measures that we work with agencies and nonprofits on developing as a part of this process. Uh, we may also determine that the scope or scale may need to be refined, so we would also uh do that during the application process. Then the application is either approved or denied, or we make recommendations to the city administrator as well as the mayor. About uh the applications that have been provided once the final application package is complete. Uh, once there's been a determination from the mayor and city administrator about uh moving forward. We will move forward with funding with those organizations. Uh, there are grant agreements and supplemental exhibits that have to be signed and executed by both. The Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs as well as uh those applicants, and then the final stage in that process would be to receive funding. Next slide, please. So I mentioned in the previous slide that there's a scoring criteria for which the applications are evaluated. Um, to the left, you'll see that uh our scoring criteria includes uh seven components. And out of a possible score of one hundred, proposals are determined or broken down in this way. For any proposals that receive a score of fifty points or less by any member of the review team, those proposals are declined. Uh, for any proposals uh that score greater than fifty and up to sixty-seven. Uh, we may again ask an applicant to provide supplemental documentation or provide us with additional information on scope and scale. Uh, we give those applicants an opportunity to opportunities to make those revisions, um at which point. Uh, the proposal will either be uh moved on to the application process or declined if we do not receive the information that's being requested. Uh, or the documentation that's being requested. Proposals receiving an average of sixty-seven points and above move on to the next step in the process, and that again is that formal application phase. And then also very important to note that of all of the seven criteria, uh the highest weight is on equity. Next slide. So again, with the highest weight being on equity, we uh are focused. Um, and we share with applicants that equity should be the central tenet of all proposals. Uh, we refer our applicants to not only uh the Treasury or the federal definition of equity, but also on the city's definition of equity. And one thing that we want to make sure is that not only that we keep in mind as we review project proposals that. Also that our applicants keep in mind as they're thinking through um an equity lens when they're proposing projects. So these are the questions that we are asking. Around accountability, how will they be used to achieve and document equitable outcomes? How will the target populations be represented in the execution of the project? Uh, with the uh focus on underserved communities, how does the project account for potentially disparate outcomes for underserved communities? Um, and we also point our applicants to guidance from the Treasury Department that outlines uh qualified census tracts. Uh, that that's one method that can be used to determine or identify communities uh that are underserved. And in addition to that, we also ask or think about historical disparities. How will the project mitigate or decrease existing and historical disparities? So again, um as the mayor has mentioned in many of his remarks, as well as the city administrator and other city officials, we are focused on equity as a part of our ARPA investments. Next slide. So we also wanted to uh provide some context on what are the things that we think about. Uh, when making uh our considerations prior to funding. And before we make recommendations to the mayor and to the city administrator around funding levels, timelines, and priorities. Uh, so in terms of funding levels, we we think through how much ARPA funding is available. How did the ru- view team score their proposals relative to others? And also if there are other viable funding sources available. Um, as you may know, uh the six hundred and forty-one billion dollars uh that the city received are not the only ARPA allocations that were received. Um, in the city, there are other agencies that have received direct allocation, so. When we're thinking through our funding levels, we're also asking if there are other federal funds that are available uh for some of these proposals. In terms of funding timelines, we want to understand and think through what's the level of urgency in implementing these projects. And also we want to be focused on whether the funds can be expended by the statutory deadline. Again, uh, the guidance calls for all funds to be expended by the end of calendar year twenty-six, so we want to ensure that anything that we fund. Um, can adhere to that deadline. And in terms of funding priorities, uh how does the project align with the five pillars that I previously discussed? Uh, does the project align with other ARPA investment decisions? So as we've heard, the city council president and others mention. Uh, about strategy, we are absolutely paying attention to how some of the proposals align with each other and thinking through um strategic use of these funds. Uh, we also want to think through, did the proposal receive an endorsement? Uh, you may, as you're aware, uh, the council has an opportunity to endorse a project proposals. Uh, the city council president has fifteen uh endorsements that may be used on project proposals whilst the city council members, as well as the comptroller, have. Ten endorsements. Uh, then lastly, uh where will the ARPA funds make the greatest impact? Um, again, as mentioned uh in earlier in this discussion and in this presentation. Uh, we are focused on making sure that these investments have an impact on the city. Next slide. So also want to provide some context on our proposal status. Uh, so Mayor Scott identified the five priority areas in his mayoral address on September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. And again, those include COVID nineteen response, violence reduction initiatives, economic recovery, workforce development, and broadband and digital equity. Again, the Recovery Office thinks about those in in the category in the bucket of city stabilization. Uh, the Recovery Office is continuing to coordinate with the lead agencies in these areas uh to determine final budgets. For the priority areas, and we expect to make announcements about investments later this month. Uh, the application portal is open to city agencies, quasi-governmental agencies, and nonprofit organizations. The application portal opened to nonprofit organizations on October the first, and we held a training. Was well over five hundred participants on September the twenty-eighth to make sure that our nonprofit partners understood the process. Uh, for applying for application, I'm sorry, for applying for ARPA funding. Uh, proposals are in the beginning stages of the application process, therefore no proposals have been funded to date. I want to make sure that I emphasize and highlight that because I know that there are concerns that there is money that's already been spent already out the door, that is not correct. Uh, it's not factual. Um, we are still in the application process for many of the proposals that have been from uh that have been submitted. Uh, and then also want to just highlight the speed of funding. Uh, we talked about a little bit of the difference between CARES and ARPA a little bit earlier in the presentation. Where CARES Act was really focused on relief and getting money out the door quickly. ARPA is a little bit more strategic in that we have these areas that the law specifically calls out, and we're also again employing this proposal process. But the speed in which funding um can get out the doors really contingent upon how quickly applicants provide a complete application package. Um, and also the efficiency of our city processes. Next slide. So also want to highlight some key deadlines just for awareness and context. Um, the Recovery Office and our review team, uh we began to. Accept proposals, or actually say review proposals uh in August of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we had our early submission deadline, which was September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And by early submissions, what we really mean um is that those that are focused on. Uh, re- are related to health and safety are what we call our kind of early submissions. Again, the application portal opened on October one. Uh, our next deadline submission will be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, that is the same time that the portal will close to nonprofit organizations. Um, that December deadline is really for all other project proposals. Um, those that are not necessarily related to health and safety, although there might still be some that come in uh that are related to those areas. Um, and we'll still be accepting applications throughout that time. And then our final application deadline is in March of twenty twenty-two, and that's really to allow agencies to propose projects that may be needed to support. Um, some of our action planning processes. Uh, as the council may be aware, under the leadership of CAO Shorter. Uh, agencies are in the process of developing action plans to support the Mayor's five pillars. Uh, which will serve as the administration's governance framework. And of course, these project proposals must adhere to the eligibility categories outlined in the law and Treasury guidance. Um, in addition to supporting uh the five pillars and any of the actions that uh agencies submit. Next slide. So really just wanted to kind of end with highlighting the status of the Recovery Office and talking about some of our key accomplishments and what are our next steps. Um, as noted, we have only been in existence since July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and we have hit the ground running. Uh, we've engaged our leaders and provided agency briefings and one-on-one meetings with a variety of agencies and nonprofit organizations. Uh, we've refined the proposal and application processes to make sure that we have a a seamless process and that we have. Uh, automated communications with our applicants, that they understand where they are in the process. Uh, we submitted our first annual recovery plan to Treasury on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we've reviewed more than one hundred proposals for eligibility, um engaged our internal proposal review team. And hired a nine of our ten Recovery Office team members. Uh, we launched a public feedback form and enhanced our website. And developed key communication materials, which include one-pagers and fact sheets and frequently asked questions. So that we can provide guidance and information to potential applicants. And we also reviewed requests for information for proposals from our potential university partners. Who will provide us with uh evaluation services to make sure, as Councilmember Mosley or Council President Mosley said. To ensure that we are getting bang for the buck for uh what we are investing our ARPA dollars in. Uh, in terms of our next steps, uh we will stand up our nonprofit proposal review team and begin to engage them in the review process. Uh, develop and implement communications and community engagement plans. Uh, facilitate funding and pre- procurement processes for our city stabilization projects. Uh, facilitate application process for our city recovery projects, um which also includes technical assistance from our office as well as our application advisors. Uh, in addition, uh we will begin to fund projects and begin monitoring the implementation. Um, and including compliance with Treasury guidance, and lastly, submit our required reports to Treasury. Uh, that's the last slide, but the the last two that I want to just highlight on our appendix slides. So one is just going to go with the re- reporting requirements to making sure that there's an understanding of of what we are required to report on. There are program measures, financial measures, and treasury measures for predefined data requirements for specific categories, which I've highlighted here. Um, all of that information, in addition to expenditures, will be included in our quarterly and our annual report. And then the last slide is really just a high-level um timeline of our of implementation for ARPA funds. Um, I'll just note here that the timeline is divided into three segments. Uh, noting that after disbursement, the office will pivot to performance management and monitoring the implementation of funded projects. And then the last segment of the timeline includes closeout actions, since all funds will need to be expended by the end of calendar year twenty-six. Um, of course, uh, some of those timelines may shift and move and and maybe start to change. So that is the end of my formal presentation. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney. Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, quick question is kind of between um. Um, Bob and Ms. Kearney. Uh, when we talk about the budget stabilization. And um taking adherence to the loss of revenue. I know that we've seen a surplus because of some some of the federal dollars that was able to kind of um. Supplement uh so much of the relief efforts that we need to provide to our residents in the midst of of the the pandemic. How does the budget stabilization work with the money that has already been replaced? Uh, from other federal money, like how does that flow? Like, so if some care money uh went towards a service. That we overextended ourselves, that was outside of that budgetary projection. Um, does that money get backfilled now with ARPA money? How does that work?
Yeah, so so uh the way this is, this will work is, we're we're actually. Starting to encounter the situation that you're describing because some of the things we've been supporting with CARES. Um, is expires at the end of this calendar year. Um, we also have um two main programs, the feeding programs and the hoteling programs that we have been getting reimbursed. Uh, from FEMA for, but the FEMA guidance has been that we will get hundred percent reimbursement for that through December. But after that, all bets are off. We don't know how much longer those programs will continue from those sources, so. Um, uh, the idea of the budget stabilization is um first is to protect us on the revenue side. So our our budget for fiscal twenty-two was um, you know, based on a a slow recovery of some of the 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 sources that got hit really hard. Um, especially like I've mentioned dozens of times now, you know, hotel tax, parking revenues, et cetera, convention center income. Uh, which have really struggled to recover and really haven't recovered much at all yet. But on the other hand, the CARPA funds could be used if we do choose to continue some of those services. COVID response services that I'm describing, uh, once the CARES Act money or the FEMA funds expire. So I see it as both, it's 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 um, and it's kind of a wait-and-see approach, right? Like, we're still early in fiscal twenty-two. You know, my instincts at this point is because of Delta, we haven't quite recovered what we hope to do in the first quarter so far of this year. And so if we fall short at the end of the year, we can use ARPA as a backfill. If there are programs that we want to continue that are COVID nineteen response related that we choose to continue. Or feel that we need to continue without the 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 prior federal aid, we can use ARPA for those sources as well. So we're kind of grappling with all those issues now, um, because December thirty-first to the end of this year is the time that the CARES Act money. Uh, for sure goes away and and there's a potential that the FEMA uh uh funding would end as well at that point.
So Bob, if we know um when CARES is set to stop. Um, why wouldn't we include the continuing of services that we've been provided through CARES? Why wouldn't we provide, why wouldn't we include that in our agency-specific ask associated with ARPA?
Well, we we do have, excuse me, we, the ARPA team has been working with. The Health Department primarily, but but other agencies as well to try to figure out what the COVID nineteen response costs will look like once. Uh, these other funds go away. So we are looking at that now, and we, you know, some of the things we're doing in terms of vaccination and testing and and. You know, direct health response, I think, obviously have to continue. Uh, some of the other things we paid for out of CARES were one-time items, so like, for example, we invested in a bunch of uh telework technology. For folks to be able to work from home. We don't necessarily think we'll have to do another massive investment there, but there might be some recurring cost. Uh, to commit to. Um, we were paying some for some costs like personal protective equipment out of CARES. Um, which will have to potentially either absorb an agency budgets or use ARPA for, so. Uh, it's it's a, I can tell you for sure that the Health Department, being the lead on the pandemic response, has been working with the ARPA team. To develop a plan to kind of pick up some of those costs after the end of December. Um, but other things we spent out of CARES, we're going to have to make a decision on, do we need to continue it? Was it a one-time investment that doesn't have to be repeated, and can we kind of live within convenience?
Got you. So so Bob, just to make sure we're on the same page. So for the items that we know we want to continue. Say, for instance, just to throw out one example, the Lord Baltimore Hotel. Stabilization, for lack of a better term, type of uh situation. If we want to continue that after December, um, the expectation is that money that we're projecting out. Wouldn't go inside a budget stabilization pot. That would go to the Health Department or whatever, whatever agency is kind of working to to minister that, and that would be in that agency's ARPA. Line item.
Yeah, that's that's fair, that's right, that's fair to say, and of course, on that program, our first hope is that we can extend the. You know, get FEMA aid for as long as we can, so if it does extend after December, of course.
I was just trying to create an easy example that we kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
So so back to revenue loss, revenue loss would be, I guess, what we're projecting. Say, for instance, um, you know, hotels are still having an issue, a Marriott, you know, uh, if we have to factor in ten million or whatever. For something like that, that would be a just a quick, easy, I'm not saying that that's something we would do, but that would be a quick and easy example of one one thing that you would want to factor in budget stabilization, right?
Exactly, yeah. So like, when we when we look at fiscal twenty-two, you know, we had a budget, we had a revenue forecast, it was. I would say, you know, conservative in that we were uneasy about how quickly the recovery would occur. And if we fall short of that revenue forecast in fiscal twenty-two, which is still possible, right? Because with the Delta variant, you know, we had slow months in the first quarter for for hotel and parking. Again, we still have not a lot of activity at the convention center.
And real estate may not continue on the same trajectory it was in the past two years.
Right, yeah. So our our expectation would be if those revenue uh projections fall short of what was in the budget. We would end with a deficit. We wouldn't be able to 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 pay for even our. if those revenue projections fall short of what was in the budget, we would end with a deficit we wouldn't be able to pay for even our existing services. So in that case, we would have to potentially dip into ARPA to balance the fiscal '22 budget. At the end of fiscal '21, if you remember, we thought we might have to use some ARPA out of that budget stabilization to balance the budget, but what ended up turning in our favor was we had a stronger spring on the revenue front when there was kind of indications that the vaccinations were working, people were kind of back out and about. And we also started to receive checks reimbursement back for FEMA from things that had been supported by FEMA. So we got an influx of money right before closeout where we didn't need to use ARPA funds to balance the budget. But we can't say that for sure in fiscal '22 or beyond. Again, depending on what the recovery is, we might need to dip into some of those funds to balance either planning your budget or to keep us whole once we get into a fiscal year. So that's kind of the situation we're grappling with.
So if there's a surplus, the delta between what the budget stabilization was projected, we would project it to need and what we actually needed at the end of '23, what happens to that money?
I mean, our thinking is we would, you know, if we, we don't want to need the budget stabilization money, right? We would prefer to spend it, but we're...
So what happens, though, at the end of '23 when we have to have it spent?
Well, we would, we would put it back, you know, on a year-by-year basis, we'll look at what we need. And if we do have extra funds, we would put it back to additional project spend. We could do more and some of the things, you know, Shamaya was talking about, some of our priorities. But we've chosen to just reserve some so that we don't get, we don't want to get halfway through the ARPA and be in a hole on the general fund side and have already spent all the ARPA money. So we're trying to just manage the timing. And then we'll bring it down every year. You know, if we don't need it in a particular year, we might be able to put some dollars back into programs or other applications. So we're kind of monitoring this. It's really like a month-by-month, quarter-by-quarter basis to figure out, you know, what we need to do and what we can, what we need to use out of budget stabilization, if any.
And that's why we're asking for the monthly update. Thanks, Bob. Shamaya, I have a couple of questions. We talked about the budget stabilization, and I know that, I thought I saw on the slide that there was some, what we projected to be some dedicated money that we kind of wanted to push to the side to ensure that we were as responsible in taking care of any revenue loss going forward. Outside of that, has there been any decision to like segment certain dollars out of the remaining six, remaining amount of the $641 million? Like, are there any specific buckets or that we would like to achieve as relates to agency, to nonprofits?
So the short answer is no. The $500 million that is remaining after the budget stabilization dollars are for all recovery projects, which would also include that bucket that we talked about in terms of city stabilization and those five areas that were outlined in the Treasury guidance. And then any of the project proposals that we received from both nonprofits and from city agencies.
So the $100 million nonprofit number is just a rumor. That's nothing specific that the agency has decided, that the administration has decided on yet, right?
That is correct. I've not heard that, but if that is what is out there, that's not correct.
Good. Thank you, Director Kearney. Our next question is, has there been any specific, agency-specific decisions on spending on the money? I know that there's been a request and a lot of proposals from the agency. Has any decisions been made yet from an agency's specifics perspective?
No. Other than the lead agencies for those five areas that I've already identified, the Recovery Office has been working with those lead agencies. So that would be MONZI, that's the Department of Health, that's MOED, the Office for Broadband and Digital Equity with those offices. We've been working directly with them because, again, they're the lead agencies for those five areas. For others, we're starting to have conversations to determine if there are other agency-specific needs from ARPA. But there has not been decisions at this time. There's still strategic conversations and discussion.
So, so actual allocation amounts or to specific programs or tasks have not been decided yet with those five main agencies, right?
Nope, still finalizing those numbers. So the agencies have provided us with estimated budgets. We are under the hood and behind the curtain and talking with agencies to understand and understand what their estimates are based on. So we've had very, very detailed conversations with each of those individual agencies. Sit-down conversations where we're asking for things like how much money they spent with CARES or for contracts and things of that nature to make sure that we have a foundation for the ask and then trying to project out what we might need across the years of ARPA for those individual projects. So that is still a work in progress while we're sitting down with agencies and getting the information and documentation to justify their estimated budgets.
Thank you. And then what is the expectation on timing to finalize that agency plan, particularly as it relates to the five major agencies?
So our goal is to make announcements this month. As the mayor identified in his mayoral address on September 13th, that he would present and announce those investments. And so that is still the plan to do that this month.
So in the month of October. Switching gears a little bit, who is on the review committee, the six members of the review committee?
So there are representatives from the Planning Department, the Law Department, from Finance, from the Office of Equity. Did I already say Planning? And then we have one external person that is external to the city agencies from the nonprofit community that serves on our review team.
Who's that? What organization is that? Who's that person?
Mr. President, real quick, I'm sorry. I think that was only five. Was that six or five?
I don't know.
Mr. President, how many did you have there?
I only have four.
So I heard Finance, Law, Planning, Equity, and then an external participant?
Yes, the four I have. Well, Shamaya, you can get back to us on the other six. Really interested in seeing what that planning committee is, looks like. But who's the external partner?
So there are different external partners for our internal review team and also for external for, oh, I'm sorry. I want to backtrack just one second to go back to the original question because there's also someone from our office and also from OPI that serves on the review team.
All right. If you could send us that list of the whole review team, really interested. But the question now is, who's that external partner on the review committee?
Let me pull that up one second because I don't remember everyone off the top of my head in the pod.
I know you knew. I'm sorry. Just interested in the organization. You want to get that to us as well?
Yes.
If, if, if it's going to take some time, we can go on. You can just provide it to the committee.
Okay, I'm happy to do that because I don't want to say the wrong name and I do have a lot of names in my head right now, so I don't want to say them wrong.
I know you, you're getting the Baltimore shuffle of all the names. I can only imagine being in your position, how many people are reaching out to you, so I understand. Thank you. And then the nonprofit review team, do we, has that been constructed yet?
So we're in the process of reaching out to individuals to serve on the review team. We've extended invitations for people to serve. And we are holding a training with those external entities or those external individuals later on this month so that we can get them up to speed on what the process is and help them understand what the time, timing is of decisions and things of that nature.
What size do we expect that team to be, Director Kearney?
You said with size?
Yes, ma'am.
It would also be a six-member team.
Another six-member team. Okay. Now specifically about equity. That is a term that could be used in many different circles, in many different ways, and have completely different understandings. Now, I know that we don't currently in the city like have data systems to track like equity to account for like race or non-gender conforming or anything like that. I guess what's the plan to evaluate equity in those final scores? And how are we, how do we assure that the individuals that you're going to select are competent in actually grading, I guess, the largest piece of the pie, as you kind of eloquently stated earlier? How are we sure that they're competent to, to adhere to, I guess, the initial goal of using equity as a major stake point for grading?
So in the presentation, we talked about the accountability, making sure that it adheres to underserved communities and that it addresses historical disparities. So as a review team, we are asking our review team members to make sure that those individual elements are addressed in the project proposals. As it pertains to, once we move a project proposal to the application phase and ultimately to implementation, we are starting to have discussions with agencies now around performance measures. As you alluded to, a lot of agencies don't typically collect information in that way. So we'll have to talk to agencies around their abilities to be able, and nonprofit organizations, around their abilities to be able to attract information by gender, by neighborhood, by age, by, by race and things of that nature. We are going to set that expectation upfront that we want agencies to be able to do that. And we're planning to work with them to make sure that we can get that information. I am keenly aware that we can't just talk about equity, that we have to be able to show our return on investment. And so explaining that that is our goal in the very beginning as we establish our performance measures is a part of that process.
I guess that's kind of getting back to some of my other questions. That's why I'm really interested to see who the external partners are, not just as it relates to the review committee for agencies, but also specific to the nonprofit review team. I mean, because we could set a goal all we want, but if someone is not trained in the lens of understanding what equity, diversity, and inclusion actually means, it's really hard for them to implement because they're just going to do it off the basis of their own perspective or experiences. So that's where I'm concerned at because I think, you know, we talk about it in the city a lot today, but we actually have not come full circle to implement it in our just regular kind of operations of city government. And so that, that deeply, deeply like concerns me, really, really interested in it because I think that this is, one, a unique opportunity. I keep saying this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. But we can't, we can't proportionally implement what we do now in the city from a diversity, equity, inclusion into this process and be comfortable or happy at the end of this rainbow. So I just, I guess, I'm just trying to really try to reiterate and tell you that we have to be extremely intentional in that. And I'm definitely interested in kind of better understanding what that plan looks like and the individuals, how they're selected and who's selected to kind of be part of that really, really important task of utilizing equity in these grading.
Certainly. And I do also just want to interject, Council President, just for one second. In addition to kind of our attendance that we look at as a part of our application process, we also have an equity impact analysis that is a part of the complete application package. And so we are, again, asking agencies to provide us and nonprofit organizations to provide us with information and we're going to look at the responses that we receive back as a part of that analysis and determine if we can move forward with funding and that they're going to be able to provide us, again, return on investment with those dollars and be able to show us how we made a measurable and tangible impact as it pertains to equity.
And that's, Director Kearney would like, actually scares me the most. That if there's an expectation that the product that's produced from the nonprofits, is that going to determine kind of their grading associated with equity? That's why I think the folks on that committee are just like so important. And I hate to belabor the point, but definitely really interested in how you construct that team, how that team looks like, and who's on that team. The last question I have, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for providing me this opportunity. But the last question I have is, are nonprofits who are, who were, have been part of this grading system, have been part of the review committees, and will be part of the nonprofit review teams, are they eligible or any, any affiliates eligible to apply also for ARPA money through the city?
So the short answer is yes, they're eligible to apply, but we do have a process where anyone who is associated with a project proposal or a project proposal is coming from their agency, they must recuse themselves from a part of the process? I'm sorry. I heard.
Chairman Costello? Yeah. Marguerite, can you please let Councilman Stokes in?
I'm sorry, Director Kearney, if you could finish.
Okay. I was stating that...
They could potentially be part...
Yes, that they could potentially be a part, but we have a process for those individuals to recuse themselves and we have alternates in the event that, so to avoid any conflicts of interest. We have, we have an alternate that was standing on the review team.
So Director Kearney, I'm not sure if you came up with this plan or this is a plan that you inherited, but again, that speaks to like my major concerns of how kind of the foundation nonprofit institutions have kind of worked and operated for a very long time in a very inequitable manner in the city of Baltimore. My suggestion to the administration, particularly as it relates to the nonprofit review team, is not necessarily have folks from the nonprofit community sit on that review board, but have folks who have expertise in diversity, inclusion, and equity that will be able to take the administration's and the mayor's vision and those pillars, those five pillars, into evaluating them in an unbiased way. Just like in the business community, be it law, be it finance, be it entertainment, the entanglement associated with nonprofits is real, like it should be. So why have nonprofits sitting on determining what nonprofits gets, get access to money and what nonprofits do not? Particularly knowing that the largest variable in the equation of the grading system is around equity. So let's ensure that we have folks who have subject matter expertise and experience and perspectives in diversity, equity, inclusion that can understand and know and, and, and respect and respond to the mayor's goal of those five pillars. Why not have them grade so we do not have any conflict of interest so that there are not any entanglements? So that's just my suggestion back to the administration. I have a lot of concerns associated with the information we talked about today, specific to equity, particularly knowing that that's the biggest weight associated with what we're doing here. I also have a major concern that if we're, if we're, if we have an expectation that the folks that are going to be applying for these grants, that they're going to do the legwork around communicating to us what equity like really looks like, then I think that that provides a level of imbalance in that process as well. And, you know, I don't want to continue to belabor that and kind of dig deeper in that. Definitely interested in kind of talking to you offline, but that does serve some major concern to me. Thank you so much for your time. Excited for your leadership. I look forward to working with you. Mr. Chair, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to interject earlier because Councilman Stokes was attempting to get in the webex, but that looks like it's resolved itself and I apologize for my poor internet service over here. Director, and maybe this is for finance as well, can we go back to the revenue stabilization piece? I think we, I think you all had talked about $130 million allocated to that, about $11 million for the operation of the office and $130 million for revenue stabilization. Is that intended to just cover this upcoming fiscal year or is that going to be for the following three fiscal years?
So I can take that one. So Councilman Costello, so the revenue stabilization, the budget stabilization, we should call it, is, is meant to cover the full term of ARPA. So, but again, it will have to determine on a year-by-year basis if we feel like we're fully recovered and we can move on and throw that money back into the pot for other projects or if we need to keep some for the later years of ARPA. You know, my feeling so far, my instinct so far is that this is going to be a long-term, a longer-term issue where we might have other variants pop up. There might be, we might have a period like we had kind of in the spring and early summer where we felt pretty good about where things were heading and then we kind of head into another direction quickly. So my instinct at this point is we might need to leave some of that money for a longer period of time. But yes, the ultimate goal is to leave some available. And again, it doesn't do, you know, my perspective is it doesn't do the city much good to spend a bunch of money on projects and then come back and say we've got to make 30 or 40 million dollars of cuts in other areas to core services because we're not back to, we're not, we're not stable in our general fund budget. So that's the idea here is to, to kind of balance those two things and not shortchange the general fund and kind of our critical core city services, but also try to get as much money out the door on, you know, the most impactful projects.
Thanks, Bob. That's really helpful. And then shifting to core services. Have we made any decisions yet on how to eliminate the backlog that exists for core services such as trees getting trimmed? And I'm just throwing out one example.
So, so you're referring to areas where we have, it sounds like where we have backlog service requests because of COVID. How do we kind of bring those down?
No, I think, let me rephrase the question. We have numerous service request backlogs that have historically existed and which were exasperated. and which were exasperated by COVID nineteen and other management failures of previous administrations. And those backlogs continue to get longer and longer. So have we made, have we started to discuss and or have we made decisions about how we can utilize this funding stream to eliminate those backlogs and get back to a, you know, baseline of zero outstanding requests in certain areas?
Yeah, from from a ARPA perspective, I I I mean, I I like I told you, I'm serving on the review team, so I have seen some requests come through. I don't remember any yet, at least that I've seen that kind of address a backlog of, you know, service requests or kind of getting back to neutral or getting back to something that can be sustained, but I I would defer to Shemiah or Chris, if you've seen any any applications come through or discussions yet on those. I haven't seen any myself, but I think it would be something that would be eligible if an agency had a good request.
There haven't been any specific proposals related to backlogs. However, there have started to be some strategic discussions around city services and what might be eligible under the law and what we should pay attention to and prioritize. So those discussions have started, but there have not been any specific proposals that have been submitted.
Okay. Couple of years from now, we're all going to look back on this and we're going to evaluate whether or not we thought we effectively dispersed these funds and made an impact in the city. I recognize that you have to deal with sixteen different elected officials beyond your immediate boss, the mayor. So I can appreciate that you're being tugged and pulled in in various different directions. From my perspective, and I'm just one of sixteen, and I President and I don't agree on this a hundred percent, just as Councilwoman McCray or Councilwoman Ramos or whomever else is on this call, we all we all have our our own ideas. I think it I would walk away from this process very frustrated if we spend all this time trying to figure out how to do new and innovative things. Not different ways of, not not what the president was talking about about using equity to spend the money the right way. But if we're coming up with all these new constructs for how to spend money and we're not delivering core services effectively, and currently in the city of Baltimore, we do not deliver core services effectively. That's not a reflection of this mayor. It's not a reflection of necessarily anyone in the room. I think it's collectively. And we have to figure out how to deliver core services. Because when it takes seven years to get a tree trimmed because it's growing in someone's window, that's a problem. When we have outstanding solid waste of bulk trash requests that have built up over time, that was exasperated by two mayors ago during the the VRI initiative. And that that backlog was brought back down. And then COVID hit and we had to suspend recycling and, you know, I'm preaching the choir here. I think everyone understands what I'm talking about. But I could go on for the next twenty minutes to talk about core services that are not effectively run. I know that the city administrator has been very focused on, you know, reforming that and and fixing some of those problems. But this 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 stream of funding is an incredible opportunity to not overthink and not recreate the wheel and just fix basic things that we are not doing effectively. So I would just offer that as as my input for your consideration. With that, I'm going to go in the order that you all appear on my screen, Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is for our chief recovery officer. Miss, Miss Kearney, thank you. I want to go back to equity. I do feel that this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. So I'm echoing pretty much all of my colleagues and of course the council president who stated it earlier. And for me, it is an opportunity. We have one opportunity to get this right. And I want to make sure that we do get it right. Equity is the largest weighted portion within the application. And what I want to make sure I understand is do we have just specific measures? Not just for our agencies, but for our nonprofits, data points that are already laid out that we know that we're going to be collecting. And how are we going to get this information? Is there a plan just to track this information for everyone across the board? Is there one laid out plan for what our measures are for equity? Again, for our agencies as well as our nonprofits and quasi agencies? Or is there a plan that's coming to specifically lay out what measures of equity are we tracking? And that's my first question.
Okay, thank you for the question. So I'll reiterate again that this office has only been in existence since July twelve, twenty twenty one. And so we have a lot of work that we still need to do. We are very focused on equity and working with our chief equity officer to make sure that there's a common understanding about what we mean as pertains to equity. Yes, we will be working to establish some equity measures. We have not done so yet at this time. But recognize that that is what I would call a core measure that we'll want to make sure that we are assessing across our different ARPA projects and proposals that we receive. In terms of collecting data and information, one of the things that our office has been working on is a standardized or centralized way to report information. I certainly don't want to receive emails and ad hoc Excel spreadsheets with information from of the probably hundreds of organizations that we're going to end up funding projects for. So we are working with our chief data officer with OPI and with others within the city to to think about what a centralized and standardized system might look like so that we can collect that information.
Ms. Kearney, is there any type of timeline? I know that you're working with the chief data officer with OPI. Have they relayed to you what is their timeline for that plan, that measure or for this system? So you can track it and so everyone can be on the same page about equity. Just the just the specific measures around it. So has there been a timeline provided? Or have you got, that's the question.
So I I don't want to make it seem like that is the responsibility of OPI for the equity office. It is a shared conversation that we need to have. So is there a timeline? No, but have we started our discussions? Yes. And as we continue discussions, we will get to a timeline for implementation, or I should say for development of those measures. But at this time, is there a timeline? No.
Okay, I just want to state that our our chair put it, we all have what we may see as priorities. Equity is a priority for me, and I do want to make sure that we're tracking it the right way. I'm going to go into my second question. This is a very low level question. How did we decide on the minimum request of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the proposal?
I'll defer to Erin to answer that question. Are you on the line still?
Yes, I I am. Good afternoon. Good morning, everyone. So to answer the question about how we got to the two hundred and fifty thousand number, it really is a measure of capacity and what we were able to do administratively. And also, although that number is two hundred and fifty thousand, that is over the life of the project, which can be up to twenty twenty six, twelve thirty one, twenty twenty six, based on the details of the project. Two hundred and fifty thousand, although it may seem like a high number, can be two positions for three years. It can be a number of things. It can be other eligible projects that may be capital related or have high startup costs. But we did settle on the two hundred and fifty thousand number and considered various thresholds, including higher numbers such as five hundred thousand, but thought two hundred and fifty was the most appropriate and what we could administer administratively in the most effective way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Kearney, and also Director Sennemy for your presentations. Our our president really did go into detail with a lot of good questions that I think the council, most if not all of the council members understand and are on the same page with. As recently as our council, as our council meeting that we had yesterday, there was so many resolutions and bills put in that dealt with thing, that dealt with equity really and they went back to, we had things that had to do with our climate and environment. We had bills that again dealt with good jobs. We had bills, there's always something dealing with housing. And of course, we want to add our seniors in there. So all of these things have to always be at the table as you're making decisions and I I'm sure, I'm sure you know that it's and we say over and over again, as our chair had mentioned, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to improve the declining, I'll say, city services that we have and we've recognized how bad they really are through through COVID, even though they've already been there. So I I really think that strong considerations should always be on just advancing all of the agencies that we have. I agree with the president mentioning you know, his issue with a nonprofit being on the board when they're going to be applying. So I guess one of my questions would be I'll go back and do another question. You had mentioned endorsements and you said the council will get ten endorsements, the president fifteen. Can you elaborate what you mean by endorsements? How involved are we gonna, what kind of power are we going to have with those ten endorsements? Because I think that's important for us within our prospective district. Could you elaborate a little more on how much control we have with that?
So as a part of the process, every city council member will receive ten endorsements, which means that you will get a report from us on projects that are deemed eligible and that have gone through our review team process. We will provide those to you on a rolling basis because we are reviewing applications on a rolling basis. And with those ten endorsements, you can share those with the with our office and let us know if there are any that you strongly support with those ten endorsements. And that will play be a factor. We will share that information with the city administrator and with the mayor when we are making recommendations for projects that we think should be funded.
Okay, so are we going to, I know you had, on one of your screens, you had mentioned that you had virtual meetings with, I guess it was nonprofit engagement. Are we as council members, can we get a list of those prospective nonprofits that work in our districts? You know, that will kind of help us in advance, knowing who's who's interested. And who is engaged and who has attended the virtual meetings, you know, which ones are on the forefront and are really interested in getting this pot of money.
We can certainly share a list of the nonprofits that signed up for our training. On whether people actually attended or not, we won't be able to track that information because some people didn't have their organization names and things of that nature, or they signed up and did not participate. So we wouldn't be able to share that with you. In terms of identifying nonprofits by district, I'll I'll talk with the team to figure out how we might be able to do that and then follow up with you.
And and I say that because we don't, you know, if we know some interest ahead, we can kind of work with them and not, again, reinvent the wheel and try to support people that are not that haven't already started off on some of your requirements and interests. If you understand what I'm trying to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Director, quick question. Do we have a list of any internal applications from city agencies that have been denied to date?
We have a list of of applicant, or not applications, but proposals that were deemed ineligible. And then some that have been reviewed by the review team and denied. Yes, we do.
Can you send that list to the committee, please? Thank you.
I think that's going to be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my first question is, will the council members, will we be able to see the scoring of each of the organizations proposed?
Will you be able to see the scoring?
Yeah, you mentioned that there's like a bunch of scoring criteria. So will we have access to see that for these organizations?
What we generally said is that we will provide a list of those that were scored and determined to be eligible. But if you would like to also see those that are ineligible, we can provide that list. But understanding that there's, it's a lot of information. But we're happy to share that with you if that is in the interest of the committee.
Councilman Schleifer, real quick, just so there's no confusion with what my request was previously. I was asking for a list of the in internal city proposals that have been submitted and Part A being the ones that have been denied or as well as Part B, the ones that are, I guess, being considered at this point. I think that's how you broke those down into two categories. Is that correct?
No, I'm I'm more referring to external ones like the nonprofit proposals.
Got it, Councilman. I'm sorry. That question was for the director. Director, that's how you characterized it, right?
By ineligible, meaning that they were denied at or were determined ineligible before they actually were reviewed by the team. And then there are others that made it to the review team and they did not score well and were denied. You're asking for both.
Yes, can you give me that? Yes, please and thank you. Councilman Schleifer, sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, and just one point of clarity, I'm not necessarily, I mean, yes, I'd love to see the the current stuff, but I'm also talking about moving forward. You know, later on when there's more applications.
In terms of the nonprofits, I would just note again that the application portal opened to nonprofits on October one. So at this time, there's only been maybe ten that have come through and have not yet been reviewed. So there are, there are no nonprofit applications that have been scored to date.
Right. Thank you. My next question is, how much is this office? I mean, this question's for Bob. How much will this this new office that's created to manage this money be costing annually between now and when the program finishes up?
So I'll I'll take part of that. And then Bob, if there's anything else that you would like to add, please do. So the estimated allocation for the for the entire duration of the office is ten point six million. That information was shared with the council in June via presentation. We will, of course, continue to monitor our spend and determine whether we need to make any adjustments to that estimation. But that is what the current estimated cost is for the three years. You asked for annually, if we needed to divide that, I would say three million, that would be for staff and for equipment, things of that nature, which of course we would expect for those costs to to decrease over time. Bob, if you have anything else to add?
So just to clarifying on that, so you, so this office is going to be in operation for three years? Is that, is that correct?
As currently planned, that is correct.
Okay, and my and my follow up to that is, and anybody can answer this one, but why isn't this being run out of the planning department with just adding, like supplementing the additional compliance and some of the things that that you're looking into and that you're you're dealing with on the compliance side? Why isn't this being run out of the planning department whose job is to plan for the future and and who who does a lot of work on studying the current needs across the entire city in a strategic manner?
Go ahead, Bob.
I can take a crack at that one, Shemiah, first. So and and feel free to add. I think Councilman Schleifer, in our experience in the early days of COVID nineteen, you know, it was, there's, there's, there's just so much going on with this, these federal aid, you know, potential packages that it was just really a lot for an existing agency to handle. And I can say from my experience and I'm sure Aaron Moore would agree with this, who's on the line, who was in BBMR when that hit. who was in BBMR when that hit and was responsible for a lot of the early uh phases. It's just a lot for folks to handle that have normal, you know, jobs to do, other functions to kind of uh keep, keep moving. And planning department, of course, manages the capital budget process. BBMR manages the operating budget process. I think having um a separate office that, that works together with planning and BBMRs to kind of understand some of the more broader needs, but is empowered to kind of do the work, take the applications, get the money out the door, do the compliance, was, was the reason why we chose to have a separate office. It's just too much work to kind of be rolled into another office's mission when there's so much on those offices' plates already. Uh, so you know, from what I've seen so far, there's been a good, you know, good kind of sharing of information between the capital folks and the operating budget folks on my team and, and Shamaya's team, just kind of understanding, you know, what do we know already? What are the things we know are big, are, are critical needs that are outstanding in the city that ARPA can help with? But also, again, giving ARPA the, 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 the power to, to drive the process. And I can tell you, from my perspective, we would not be nearly as far along if we tried to roll this into, you know, either finance or, or planning department. If we tried to roll this into existing structure, we just wouldn't have gotten off to such a, what I think is a good start so far without a separate entity. So that's my, my um instincts, just from kind of watching it internally. And Shamaya, you know, if you have anything to add, please do.
Hang, hang, hang on one second. Uh, Marguerite, can you please let Councilman Stokes back in or elevate him? Uh, back to you, Director.
I don't have any additional comments to add. I think that Bob explained that perfectly.
Yeah, so Bob, I'll just, I'll just say this, you know, I trust, I trust your judgment on, on this, based on your response. I will say uh, it is slightly um concerning, um, you know, when we're talking about a sum of uh, you know, 10.6 million, which we know will end up, you know, probably being a little more than that. Um, if I, if my memory serves correct, I mean, that seems like, that's like the entire, like, administration budget of the planning department, you know, for a year. I understand this is a three-year thing. My bigger concern is, is just that, you know, that communication at some point won't uh continue uh as we roll out different programs and that, you know, there'll either be duplication of resources or duplication of efforts, or there'll be uh worse, certain things just not happening that, you know, where, where planning was taking ownership and not wanting to give up ownership or, or some type of, you know, issue along those lines. So that's certainly a concern that I have, but I, I, at this point, I'll trust the process. Um, Mr. Chair, do I get another question or?
No, you do not. We are going to strictly follow the two-question rule, but we will come back to you, Councilman Schleifer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this Councilman Stokes, I let you know I'm back on. I'm having internet problems, but I'm back.
Well, I was just about to come to you because you appear next to my screen. And then after that, we'll go to Councilman Burnett. Stokes, floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I was just reading Ms. Kearney, some of the um, the slide presentation, talking about how these organizations um qualify. We know equity, we wouldn't be talking about this if it was fair across the board. And we're still talking about it. One question is, what kind of staffing you have that's dealing with this um, this whole um ARP money and, and equity staff? The second question is, I was reading where you said nonprofits must have a physical location in the city of Baltimore and proof of an operating office. To me, that is a process of elimination. You got organizations has been doing the work, been trying to get the funding to do the work. They can't get it and they working out of their house somewhere. And now we found another process of eliminate those organizations who've been doing the work because now they gotta have a physical place in the city of Baltimore. My question is, who came up with that? That's, to me, is another process of elimination. For these small, um, micro businesses that have been doing all the work in the city. And then I read that, that to me just exacerbates what we're talking about equity. So you, you talk about equity on the top end, and then you got this requirement on the bottom. And then, so the equity is now not there anymore.
Right, so let me, let me respond to those inquiries then. So um, a house counts, we didn't say that it had to be in office building. Um, so if there is someone who lives in the city of Baltimore, who is conducting business or nonprofit organization that is based in their home and it's in the city of Baltimore, that would count. Uh, to your other question around equity staff, um, again, we are coordinating with the Office of Equity around uh our projects. They are on the review team. Uh, they look at the proposals and also are looking with an equity lens, um, to, one of the council members' questions earlier. Uh, McCray, around equity, we are still in the process of developing equity measures. Um, but we'll be doing so, and we're coordinating with OPI, with the department, I'm sorry, with the Office of Equity as well, uh, to make sure that we are keeping equity as on the forefront of our efforts. What was your other question?
That was mine too, Ms. Kearney. Thank you. You answered both of them. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, uh, colleagues. Also having challenges keeping my, my computer from freezing on video. Um, they're working on that, uh, but I did let the chair know ahead of time, so my apologies for being off cam. Uh, so my question uh is more in, in line with uh the chair's questioning around um, sort of the tension between innovation and uh, and, and implementing core city services. Um, my concern uh is, or I guess the question I would ask is, um, you know, what weight are we giving to uh existing programs on both the nonprofit and the agency side? Uh, my concern is with one-time pot of money, that there's.
Am I the only person that lost audio? I'm not hearing anything else.
No, I can hear you, Ms. Kearney. I don't know about everybody else.
I lost Councilmember Burnett. I didn't hear his entire question.
Yeah, we lost him.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm here, I'm listening in, but I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna cycle back. Uh, actually, hang on. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, and thank you, colleagues. Um, thank you, uh, Director Kearney for um, and uh Director Sennemy. I have a couple, I have a few questions. Uh, one is, you had um, I, my biggest concern here is that because just as all of my colleagues said, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And even you said, Director Kearney, that this is an opportunity to course correct in terms of, you know, really thinking big about how we can utilize this funding to make significant impact in our city. My concern is that we're getting applications from everywhere and that seems a very piecemeal approach to try to figure out how to actually utilize the funds to make significant impact. My question is around the scoring, given that scenario. Will there be um consideration if, for instance, the mayor, I'm gonna just use an example that I wrote to you about. Um, let's say that the mayor does want to move forward on really thinking big about what equitable development needs and investing in our black and brown communities without displacement. That is huge, right? That is a very big thing that's been dealing, we've been dealing with in our city. It is qualified with this money. How do we then, um, and I, and I think we should be thinking big like that. Um, how, does the scoring then allow for uh, you know, maybe, well, part of this application meets that criteria, but part of it doesn't, and then you sort of have to split? Or are we not thinking big this way? We're thinking just in the five pillars and priorities and hope that those things, we just kind of fit them in and see, you know, what comes out.
Um, I'm gonna take a stab at your question because there, there were a couple of thoughts there. So I'll, I'll try to follow and make sure that I address each one. Um, with regard to, to scoring, well, let me back up and say that I would not consider the application process a piecemeal approach. What I would say is that it's an opportunity for agencies as well as for nonprofits to pay, uh, to be able to uh contribute to the recovery of the city. Um, in terms of how we look at the applications, um, one of the things that we talked about on the slide about considerations is how these relate to other ARPA investment decisions. So certainly, um, as our office, we are taking a look at all the applications that are coming in and trying to align and see which ones sit together, if you will. Um, and so I don't know that that necessarily has anything to do with the scoring because if it is a, uh, application that's relative to the development, uh, creation or preservation of affordable housing, it is eligible. So that scoring doesn't necessarily play a factor in that. But what I would say is that we are certainly looking across all of the applications and looking for uh ties and where things connect. Um, and then I, I think you would also mention something about, um, if a part of the application uh is eligible or not. We, we work with agencies and we will work with nonprofit organizations because we're not at this point just yet to identify or to, to work with them on revisions to their application process so that we understand uh, or they can better articulate what is eligible versus what is not. So that we're not just, um, throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if you will, but we're taking the parts that we think um are useful, uh, that fit within the pillars, that are advancing strategies around different areas that we have for the city and making sure that we are pushing that part of the application or the proposal through the process.
Okay, thanks. I think there's still a lot of um, uh, details to, to work out there. Um, my other question is, uh, I didn't hear uh a thinking around the fact that this is one-time funding. So hiring a bunch of people for a program to do something that's going to be long-term may not be the best use of funds. Is that a consideration also? Or is it more around like, let's start this program with this money and figure out how we can, you know, I'm just using any random program, how we can then, you know, fit it in the budget um later on?
So we have absolutely been looking and talking about sustainability. We are very clear that this is one-time funding. Uh, we are very clear with agency directors, um, that they need to be thinking about sustainability moving forward. Um, please know and understand that Bob is consistently in all of our ears about what the impact would be on the general fund if we were to staff a whole bunch of people. And then, um, when ARPA funny, money expires, uh, we don't have an answer for how we would continue with agency operations and continue to staff individuals. So one of the things that we've told agencies as a part of their proposal process is that if they are advocating for additional positions, that those have to be grant-funded positions, meaning that they are not those that will be paid out of the general fund. When the grant is over and the money is gone, those staff positions leave as well. Um, and so they need to be thinking about that, the sustainability of these programs that they bring on or try or ask to bring on a lot of people. And we are certainly also working with agencies to really get behind uh the needs for staff for some of these programs and initiatives that they are requesting and identifying. If the number that they are asking for is a true need or if there is a way that we can scale those things down because we are absolutely thinking about sustainability moving forward. And I saw Bob come on camera, so I think maybe you have something you want to add to that?
Uh, no, I think, I think you, you answered it very clearly. So just want to echo those, those thoughts. It's, it's also, I should mention, it's one of the criteria, you know, being on the review team from seeing things come in. It's one of the criteria where, you know, things that have an added recurring cost at the end score lower. So it's one of the things we're actually looking through in each of the proposals. I wouldn't say that we would rule out anything that has a recurring cost because there might be things that are really valuable to do. But um, like Shamaya said, we just have to be really mindful about this. I, you know, say this again, fiscal '23 is going to be a really tough year to start with because we're recovering from COVID. We've got the new Kerwin commitments and state mandate that starts in fiscal '23. So we're not exactly entering this period in, in a position of finance, financial strength, frankly. So um, having, you know, additional things kind of added to the general fund plate is not something that we want to see. And so, yeah, that message has gone out very clearly uh to agencies that we want to keep those types of things to an absolute minimum. Or if there are things that have kind of, that feel like more recurring costs, that there's a very clear plan to kind of wind those down and phase them out at the end of the, at the end of the ARPA eligibility period.
Thank you. Yeah, my letter that I sent to all of you had that um in mind. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple more questions, but I'll wait till the end. Thanks. I'm mute, Mr. Chair.
I think Mr. Chair is having some network issues in South Baltimore. Turn your camera off, Mr. Chair.
Yep, sir. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We can hear you. All that to call on you, Mr. President. Back to you. Can't see your pearly whites, but we can hear you. I got, I had just a couple of quick questions. I'm only gonna take two questions. Um, and again, thank you to the uh committee for, you know, providing me this opportunity. One question, Bob, uh, I think earlier you talked about um, we submitted a recovery plan to Treasury Department. Is that right?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to, a recovery.
I thought you said something earlier about a recovery plan that we submitted to the Fed. That, that, I, I, I took two things.
No, we might be mixing two things. We, we have had to um submit um updates or kind of like status updates on CARES funding and ARPA, but not like a full recovery plan, so.
Not full, okay. Um, and just, I'm sorry.
Um, there, there is a recovery plan that we are required to uh submit to Treasury as a part of ARPA. That first plan was submitted to the Department of Treasury on August the 31st and is available on the ARC website.
Oh, that's what I heard. Okay, can you make sure that the uh committee has copies of that? Mr. Chair, have you seen that recovery plan? No, yeah, so, so anytime you submit stuff like that, Director, particularly if it's going to be publicly available, if you could just make sure that the, particularly this committee, but that the council uh is engaged, really appreciate it. I knew I heard something about a recovery plan, but, um, and then my other question, I think this does go back to Bob. Um, when we, when, when, when an agency identifies a need, and this kind of goes back to the whole budget stabilization, loss of revenue, other funds outside of ARPA like CARE. But when an agency or the city determines a particular need and we know that there's other federal money that's coming down the pipeline for that need, like one easy thing, uh, we're right now fighting over infrastructure dollars, right? So we know that there's gonna be a tremendous amount of opportunity around infrastructure if everything's able to work out uh in DC. We also know that infrastructure is allowable in the regulations associated with ARPA. How do we balance that between um, you, Bob, and you, Director Kearney? Will new federal money all kind of flow through this ARPA group? Or is that gonna be like this back and forth between, we're gonna fund this for infrastructure and you got, you're gonna fund this for infrastructure, just to give out like a, a, a dirty quick exam? How does, how does that work between the two organizations for future money?
Yeah, so I, I, that's a, that's a really important point because there are um some things that we might consider doing in ARPA that we would pause on if we got, you know, funding separately from the infrastructure bill. So um, the, the um recovery team has a consultant at their disposal that was hired early to kind of guide on all the rules and compliance and, and availability around um ARPA. With this um separate bill on the infrastructure that, you know, hopefully that and this other one passes in hopefully some form, that could be additional aid to the city. We have been at least screening for agencies and kind of making them aware if there's other funding available uh that they first look to those sources before we would use ARPA. Um, an example that, we also did that in the early stages of, of COVID when we were looking at CARES Act. And one example of that was in the early days of, of uh COVID-19, when we realized we were getting CARES money, we also knew that there was kind of separate money available for, you know, eviction prevention, homelessness um, uh, through other parts of the law, not in the direct allocation that came to the city. So we, we generally kind of pushed those kind of issues into those pots of money to make sure that those pots of money kind of paid for those programs so that we could preserve CARES um, for kind of more of the core things we needed to do in the city. So we'll do the same thing in, in, and when we get this infrastructure bill. I mean, there are some things that jump out at the infrastructure bill. There was talk of there being, you know, broadband uh potentially as part of the infrastructure bill. That's an obvious one that, you know, we want to make some progress on with ARPA, but maybe there'll be money in the infrastructure bill. But I generally think that the infrastructure bill will do, from the limited information we have from it so far, I mean, it will do what it's, what it says. It will be a lot of hard infrastructure things where we have such a large backlog of, of needs anyway. So if we were to get extra federal dollars for things like roads and bridges and, and the kind of the hard infrastructure, we would welcome that because we already have so many needs in those areas as well. But if there are, are parts where there's overlap, where that bill pays for and that can preserve ARPA, we, we have been thinking of that and we have been sending, I know the recovery team has been, you know, using their consultant to kind of look at both of the bills and try to figure out, are there things where there overlap so that we don't, so that we make the best use of, of the dollars?
Yeah, because it's really just about trying to maximize the dollar, right? Particularly like some of the regulations. I guess the only other follow-up question I have to everything you just spoke about is switching gears just on a state perspective in the surplus that the state and the windfall that the state is kind of counting for. Well, I assume all of that, those types of requests will come through you and will not come through this new recovery group. Is that accurate? And I'm only saying that because the recovery group, we still don't know the configuration of that committee, but the recovery group knows what, I guess, the core issues are in the agencies that they're attempting to fill with this money. Who's guiding those agencies to see if we can request it from the state, if we can request it from this infrastructure amount? You know, if we don't even get it through, through this ARPA process, that is the level of of maximization that I want to see and I'm asking about. So like, how does that, how does that happen? If, if I'm an agency, I got rejected. Are you, Bob, going to kind of work to try to get some of that surplus in the state to bring back to me? How does, how does that work?
Yeah, so I think, I think to your point, I mean, there's, there's a lot of coordination that's required because there's so many different sources now, but so, you know, we'll be working in lockstep with, with the recovery office to make sure we're giving clear communication. But on the state package, we generally, the, the Mayor's Office of Government Relations generally puts together a package in the fall to kind of like hear from agencies on what their needs in or things that we would need to, that we would like to ask for from the state. So they play a role in that process as well. So I think in combination with, you know, finance, with the recovery office, with the Department of Planning from the Capitol side and MOGR, it's kind of really all of us putting our heads together. But there is a formal process where agencies, you know, formally make a request through MOGR. And again, finance has a role in reviewing those, those requests of things that we'd like to ask for state assistance for. And yes, we did see the news that they have a larger than expected surplus, so there might be some opportunity there, especially for one-time needs.
So that money's not hitting the street like right away? There's going to be some process that you're saying we can wait till the fall to determine if we want to get access and start?
Yeah, and that process is underway. So MOGR has, has, and I think, I think I saw Natasha on here for a moment, but I mean, they have sent out requests to agencies to say, what are your kind of top, you know, state legislative needs or funding needs? And so that we kind of gather all that information and look at it collectively.
And then last question, do you have someone that sits on the review committee?
I've been sitting, actually, I've been, myself have been sitting on the.
You're a participant on the review committee?
Yes.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. When we talk about that prioritized list, do we have a prioritized list of the backlog of, you know, kind of core city services that we were talking about earlier?
I do not have one, but if there's others on the call that could speak more to those, can definitely chime in. But from a, from a financial perspective, I don't have a list of those. But there might be others on the call that can speak to that.
Mr. Chair, can you clarify, just you, when you're asking the backlog of core city services or you're talking about like the 311 requests, those sorts of requests?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So and I think this fits into a couple of categories. For example, we have a backlog of illegal dumping requests. We don't have enough capacity to eliminate that backlog ourselves. Because I mean, we just started back up, well, trash pickup, right? So there's been a lot of strains on the division of solid waste at DPW during COVID. So I'm just wondering, is there a list of, you know, core city service backlogs? Is that list prioritized? And are we looking at, and I know it makes Bob nervous when we talk about bringing on additional staff. Maybe we're looking at bringing on contractor support to eliminate those backlogs? Or P3s or whatever else under the sun?
Yeah, if I, if I may, I might suggest this, this might be a follow-up that we, we check in with OPI office on because they have a little bit better kind of week-to-week understanding of where the backlogs are in key services in terms of looking at 311 data. So I'm not, I don't think anybody on this call would, would be able to answer, but we can definitely take that, I think collectively as a follow-up to, for OPI because they do look at the data through their, you know, city stat meetings, or they have a clean stat meeting, they have a police stat meeting and others, COVID stat meeting where they look at some of the, some of the outstanding items. And they look at the data in terms of service requests on where we have, we have issues. So if I may, I would suggest we take that as a follow-up because I'm not sure if anybody can speak to it directly on this, on this call.
What about the potential to bring on additional FTEs for positions that directly generate revenue for the city? For example, parking enforcement, Division at DOT, well, Public Safety Division at DOT under which parking and traffic enforcement resides. There's been an incredible backlog due to a basic inability to properly staff. So we know that when we put a parking enforcement officer on the street, they can generate anywhere from $250,000 to $300,000 a year in revenue just by doing the basic function of issuing parking tickets. Is that something that, that we can look at? Again, just, that's just a specific example of, you know, another example being like the Special Investigations Unit at DHCD. Those are the folks that will investigate people who put up homes for sale signs and, and other things like that throughout our communities.
Yeah, so as part of the agency request process, if there is, like I, I think I mentioned earlier, there is one of the criteria is whether something leads to a recurring cost, but there's also criteria, that same question, if it leads to recurring revenue, it gets scored, you know, more highly. So I think there is room in the process for people to ask for things that generate more revenue. I mean, we think of it not just in terms of things you're talking about, but if there's projects that come through that could generate, you know, new construction or property tax revenues, those would get scored higher. I know with the parking that you're referring to, you know, we were aware, we are aware that they've had trouble filling some of those positions. We've tried to give them as much flexibility as possible. My, my sense is it's less at this point of a financial issue and more of kind of a recruiting challenge. There's, there, you know, in the early stages of the pandemic with the parking, since we weren't enforcing some parking, there wasn't, there were certain laws that we weren't enforcing. There wasn't as much need to have people available. But, you know, I recognize what you're saying. That could be something that we would consider broadly if, if a request raises additional revenue. It's something that would score more highly in the agency request process.
Okay, so if an agency doesn't think it's a priority or they don't seem to appreciate the way that you and I, that you and I do, Bob, the ability to generate revenue for the city, whose job is that in city government to say, wait a minute, there's an opportunity to generate revenue here? And we're not realizing that opportunity? So I'll give you an example, and I don't want to point at any one director. If for Steve Sharkey at DOT, if it's not a, if it's not one of his top five priorities to have parking enforcement adequately staffed because he has other priorities, which I'm sure are all good priorities. And again, this is a hypothetical example. Whose job is it to say, Steve, you need to put in a request so that we can properly staff parking enforcement so that we can generate revenue for the city and eliminate this insane backlog we have for this basic core city service?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I see it as, as my responsibility frankly to, to alert, you know, the CIO and the mayor of those issues. So, you know, for example, early in the pandemic, you know, we had stopped enforcing certain, you know, parking laws and parking rules. And so we did, we did kind of note that and bring that to the, to the administration's attention, say, hey, here's how much revenue we're losing because of that. Now, ultimately, the decision was that the non-financial considerations kind of outweighed the financial considerations in that case, early in the pandemic, that we didn't want to be putting, giving tickets to people that were working from home, especially in those early days. But yeah, I would see it as my responsibility. I do bring those issues to the administration's attention. I do reach out to agency heads all the time and say, hey, we'd like to see some more or learn more from you or information or see a proposal on something that we think would be beneficial. So I mean, I take that as my responsibility, but if you notice that or other things, you know, you can always send that to me and just alert me to it so that I'm aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, you know, complaining about SIU and parking enforcement not being adequately staffed for the last seven years now. So I'll take this opportunity to raise that again. And I'll use my discretion as chair to ask you, Bob, can you put together a list of 10 things over the next week that we can do to generate more revenue for the city that could be funded through ARPA funding? Bob? I guess he went blank as soon as I asked that question. He's a smart guy. I'm sure Bob's having internet connectivity issues, so we'll come back to him. Councilwoman McCray.
I want to start with a comment. I don't like that we would have to maybe like, I'm glad that Director Sennemy is stepping up and saying, hey, I'm that person. But I don't like that there's one person that's going to say, we're going to go through these agencies. I feel that the administration, I'm just being frank at this point, should have these, should have this stuff identified. We don't have street sweeping. Bunk trash is modified. We should know right now that some of these funds should be going directly to getting our city services back in line for developing a real plan for legal dumping. And I don't think that it's all on Director Sennemy, and I don't want it all on him, to state that we're going to do that. I'm looking for somebody within our city administrator's office to take the lead and say that we're going to put this stuff together and we're going to get city services back with some of this funding that we have. And it should not be dependent on our agencies to just submit proposals. That's the end of my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to move on to my questions, and this is going back to Director Kearney. Director Kearney, can you just tell me how we're going to use technology to aid in transparency throughout this process? You did talk about working with collectively, working with the Office of Equity, with OPI to come up with measurements for equity. There are other cities who are using technology already, and I know that our office just started within July, but they have dashboards up stating how they're allocating funds. They have contact information, very specific information about the projects that they're already funding. It's showing how much money we have left to spend, how much has already been spent. Can you walk me through some of the plans that you guys are already discussing or have in the center, in the vision, to say, this is how we're going to inform the public of how we are utilizing these funds so our residents are informed?
Thank you for the question. Again, we certainly plan on being transparent about funding decisions and using our website and other social media platforms to provide that information to residents. Yes, we plan on doing dashboards. Yes, we plan on providing information on award announcements. One of the things that I have talked with our data project manager about, as well as to our chief data officer, is about the ability to be able to maybe even map our investments so that we're able to show in dollars and cents how much we invested in different neighborhoods to the extent that we can. Of course, all of that information is going to be contingent upon data collection from our individual agencies. But I'd like to be able to do that, to have a map where we can show projects, initiatives that were funded by neighborhood. But that's probably a little more forward-thinking. But yes, we will certainly have dashboards that would identify spending and, and award amounts by project. So yes, those are in the works.
Okay, I'm, I'm just glad that we're thinking about it. And I just want to keep that top of mind because what I'm showing is other municipalities. And I'll just throw one out there, like Boston. They already have their dashboard, and I want to make sure that we're seeing items that specifically lay out, this is how we're spending the money. So folks will know, I'm going, my second question is going to still be within the community engagement area. I'm very happy that the presentation, this is very low level, but I'm happy that it's there, that the presentation video is on the website within the resources section that we're walking folks through. Are there going to be any additional training? Like the training that we had at the end of September for external organizations who want to apply? And what other, can you explain a little bit more about what the engagement strategy is outside of just the trainings? To let people know that, hey, this funding is available, that they can apply. I think earlier you mentioned that you had a list of nonprofits that you guys were engaging. But can you just walk us through what your engagement strategy is? And also, will there be additional training for external organizations?
So far, our strategy has really been to partner with some of the larger nonprofits who we know are trusted messengers and can reach some of the smaller nonprofits that may not be tuning into our website. So we've reached out to organizations like the Maryland Philanthropic Network and Maryland nonprofits, collectively organizations like that who have a reach with other smaller organizations to make sure that they are leveraging the information that we have and getting in contact with their network about opportunities. We had a list that we provided to council to provide us with names of organizations that she wanted us to target to make sure that they learned of the nonprofit opportunities. So we have used that. We also reached out to other offices within city government to get referrals for other organizations that we can reach out to. So we've kept that list and we will continue to engage them as opportunities become available. We've also talked about ways to make sure that they are engaged or understand about other funding opportunities. So we will leverage, again, those trusted messengers for that purpose as well. We will continue to provide information on our website and on social to make sure that people are aware of opportunities. In terms of additional trainings, what we've talked about internally is that once we get to the application phase of a process or once something has been determined to be funded, that we would then have trainings around reporting requirements, leveraging the consultants that we will be using as application advisors, and coming up with some detailed information to train organizations on with regard to reporting. And so what we'll be looking for in terms of performance measures and data collection in addition to the information that we'll need to report to the Department of Treasury. So that's one of the ideas that we've had as well around trainings.
So at this time, no additional external trainings, just about the process of applying?
No, no additional trainings. None of the information that we conveyed in our September 28 training is going to change. And so that's why we've made that information available on our website. But certainly, we have also told individuals or nonprofit organizations that they have questions. We're happy to engage in one-on-one meetings if necessary. We're also have our website, I'm sorry, not our website, but our email box that we have people send inquiries to us daily, actually, with questions about the process. And we have a 24-hour turnaround on responses to the inquiries that come to our email inbox.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Those are my, my questions for this round. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just wanted to echo and thank you for your comments on our city services piece. Council Vice President Middleton.
My question was about training too, and I concur with Councilwoman McCray in her comments. First, I just want to comment that I think you should think about reconsidering and encourage another virtual training at least. I just think that so many people have been missed, especially in the nonprofits with that one training. I even received some communication on, you know, the, the portal not being up. So some people are having problems or they initially had some problems at the beginning getting into the portal. So people are really, I guess, a little bit behind. And I, I think, you know, the COVID pandemic has some, a little bit to do with that. So I definitely would encourage at least having one more virtual training for, for people that are interested. And the second comment, I guess, would piggyback on what our chair said and the comments that Councilwoman McCray had mentioned that, and I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I don't think Bob Sennemy is on the line. But, you know, it just kind of shows how there's still is such a disconnect with, with our agencies and with a number of. with a number of people that have certain jobs that have not stepped foot in some of our communities that need the equity piece. You know, and and each of our districts are so, you know, we're similar in ways, but we're different in ways. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, you, you know, you had used parking as an example. I don't have any problem with parking. Again, my problems are dumping, dumping, dumping. And the problems seem to be, you know, worse with communications with code enforcement. They, we we need, there's a desperate need for cameras, and I think we could do get, it's a big investment to get cameras to catch these illegal dumpers. We have to figure out a way to get to their pockets to show that we are catching them and watching them. Because at the end of the day, I'm finding it's the same people that have learned how to beat the system to get away with things. And I'm just, we're using illegal dumping as an example, but it it's this can go across the board with a number of services, and we have to really a simple thing like investing in cameras is would would go a long way. It would go a long way. So I just want to kind of add, I just wanted to add to that, to that comment. It's it's a resource and a service that can help us. And we have brought it up so many times. The agencies complain and they talk about their needs. It it it's, it just shows how the engagement between each other and with the communities are so important. And I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is, we just rolled out some recycling cans. And I'm actually getting calls from residents saying we put our recycling on the front or the back. And that's going to me when you, and I think I'm I'm trying to get to this point where when you give people cans, you have to explain, even if they pick their trash up in the back, they put the cans on the front. So now they wonder where they put their recycling. I think we need to put some money into that that training piece because you just don't give people a can and say, hey, put your recyclers in here. And that's it. There's no training piece there for the community. I know how hard it is. They've been trying to get these cans. But we getting cans for recycling and people calling me asking me, do we put the recycling on the front or the back? That's one. The other piece is to, I think, we talk about city services, my colleagues talked about it. When we did a walk with Mayor Scott a little while ago, we ran into a lot of trees that had been cut. And we walked past in one block about six tree stumps that never have been cut. We talked to Mr. Deal yesterday. But when we talk about Mr. Chair, you talked about stuff for five years. We got trees that have been cut 10 years ago, and the stumps are still there. So I hope they really going to invest some of this money into city services like we saying and not just talking about it. Because we do have a very large backlog backlog of a number of city services and different agencies. So I hope that we really take this in consideration when my colleagues talking about how do we make and deliver better city service to the constituents of Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Schleifer?
Yes, and I apologize because I I thought I heard this before. I just, I don't have it in my notes. How much money is being directed to nonprofits?
As previously mentioned, there is no specific allocation for nonprofits. The $500 million that is available after the budget stabilization estimates is available to both the city agencies and to nonprofit organizations.
Okay, and when and when will all of the funding decisions be made for the nonprofits?
There is, so the portal closes to nonprofit organizations on December 31, 2021. Funding decisions will be made as quickly as applicants can provide us with the supplemental documentation as a part of the application package.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I have two questions. One is the slide 20 and slide 13. So on slide 13, there is the list of the mayor's five pillars that those are some of the criteria by which the the applications have to fit. And then on slide 20, there are the mayor's priorities which are different than the pillars. And so I'm kind of confused around, you know, what what are we using here as the the buckets by which we're putting in where the money is going to fit?
As I discussed during the presentation, the priority areas are those that are specifically called out in the law. The ARPA legislation identifies those priority areas that are listed on slide 20. A slide 13 includes the mayor's five pillars, which I explained are part of the governance framework for the administration. And the other proposals that we receive from city agencies and from nonprofit organizations, we would hope would align with those five pillars.
So just to follow up on that, I have written public health as one of the issue, one of the places for you can on for the 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 federal level says public health, economic impact, premium pay, revenue loss and broadband. The mayor's priorities are COVID-19 violence reduction. I guess that's the public health piece, right? Economic development, or excuse me, economic recovery, workforce development and broadband. And then the pillars are slightly different. So, I mean, it might be semantics, but I just want to make sure that, you know, the the buckets that the agencies are applying to are, you know, and the nonprofits, because I don't think the nonprofits on their application, because I saw it has the priorities. So I, you know, we want to just make sure everybody's talking from the same framework.
So let me try to say this again a little bit differently. So in the American Rescue Plan Act, there are the five areas that are eligible uses. There are also examples of things in the law that are considered eligible uses, and those five things are identified in the law. That is what we're calling the city stabilization projects and the priority areas. The mayor's five pillars are a governance framework. And what we are saying to nonprofit organizations and to our city agencies are the proposals should align with our, should align with the mayor's five pillars. But more importantly, they need to be eligible under the law. Is does that, I I want to make sure that we we are on the same page. And so please tell me if if I need to try to elaborate a bit more. I want to make sure that not just you, but to our our listening public that that there's clarity there.
No, and I appreciate that. I know that there are the five things that the that the federal government has said, this is what we'll fund. And so they definitely have to fit into that. It's just that the slide 20 has five different slightly different priority areas than the pillars or the federal piece. So just trying to clarify there, but we, I can work with, ask more specifically about that. The other question I had goes back to the timing, and I'm, I don't know if somebody else asked it, but the the decisions and all the deadlines, you know, the nonprofits, their portal closes on the December 31, and then the agencies close on in May, in March. Are we going to be seeing money spent after that? Are we going to see money being spent soon? Are we going to be seeing, you know, I'm just curious, and I'm sorry if you stated it earlier.
The first question was, will money be spent after March 2022? Yes, because the law provides for us to spend money through the end of calendar year 2026.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I was just trying to figure out when we'll start to see money being spent. Would it be before the 20, March 2022? Or is everything going to be spent after that?
No, I, we are going to fund on a rolling basis. And so as soon as we get to completion of some application packages and decisions made by the city administrator and the mayor, we would move to funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues.
All right, colleagues, we've now circled through twice. Does anyone have remaining questions?
If there are any remaining questions, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank you for your leadership. You know, I think this hearing has been really, really, really good hearing, straight to the point. This is showing the good side of government that I know the legislative branch as well as the executive branch strives to provide to the citizens of Baltimore. Director Kearney, I have not had the opportunity of meeting you in person, but thank you for your leadership. And I look forward to continuing to work with you. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for this amazing hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. One closing comment slash request in in thinking more about how Councilwoman McCray framed it as to whose responsibility it is. I think it's probably, you know, at the end of the day, it falls on the mayor, but probably should be the city administrator. I'd like to start the dialogue now around O P I providing some type of list of the backlog. So we get you know, an understanding of what those top backlogs are, like like ranking those backlogs in terms of of both volume and priority. And I assume you know, that's somehow aligned with the mayor's five priorities, but I want to encourage you to consider not overthinking it. I think this, a lot of this stuff is is really simple in terms of not what the solution is, but what the backlog is. Let me, that was a lot of rambling. Let me take it back for a second. I'd like to see from O P I in conjunction with the city administrator's office, some type of prioritization of what these backlogs are, how severe they are. And let me, you were going to do, hold on one second. I'm going to go into recess for five minutes. Okay, all right. Can everyone hear me? All right. Thank you for your patience. Had a opportunity to to kind of write this down and and think through this so I can better articulate what I'm asking for here. First, Director, today's hearing was was very helpful. Echo the council president's comments about what we're here to do. Looking forward to continuing in this role, working in partnership with the administration, but also performing our legislative oversight function. We'll continue to do that and looking forward to doing that in concert with you and your team as well as the entire administration. I'd like to come back. So we're we're going to go in recess in a couple of minutes. I'd like to reconvene the committee in the coming two to three weeks. I've got to check the schedule because we have, as we're talking about a service backlog. We have backlog of hearings in this committee, but I do think that we need to come back and we need to come back soon to discuss this this overarching issue of of the backlog of city services. I know that there have been a number of suggestions that have been brought up today, whether it's Office of Performance and Innovation, whether it's 311, whether it's the city administrator, whether it's BBMR. Let me rephrase the request so as to not make it more difficult. I would like for the administration, this administration, the mayor's administration to come back to the committee with a list of the services that have backlogs and the extent to which we can use ARPA funding to put a major debt in those backlogs. Does that make sense? Okay, and I'll ask that the administration provides something in writing to the committee by no later than two weeks from today. Actually, let's go. Let's go Friday, October 15th. Call business by Friday, October 15. The committee already has the resolution open. We're not voting it out today, so we can we can reconvene a hearing based on that authorization. Right now, coming back on October 12th is not going to happen because we have 29 bill hearings that day. We will see about October 19. But in the meantime, if you can come back to us on behalf of the administration, a list of what those core city service backlogs are and the extent to which we can use ARPA funding to put a major debt in those backlogs. And I just want to take a minute to check in with both Council President Mosby and Chairwoman McCray to make sure that kind of that summarizes this larger concern over city services.
I believe so, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your leadership.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Excellent. Colleagues, anything else for the good of the order before we go into recess?
Great hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Natasha and Director, I'll just leave it to Natasha to be the lead to to follow back up with the council in terms of the timing for that. All right, thank you all very much. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.